Can't make out it's embossed down there. Can you read it? The building was built in the 30s.
We have started the recording, but we will start the meeting at seven, which is about another minute.
Looking going back. Just on Dennis, I came across a whole pictures in the downtown library showing ice harvesting and he selects horses and wagons. And Jerry Run, one of my former neighbors told me that he harvested ice. And he still got his ice tongs. They used to haul ice to his neighborhood. But he earned some money when he was a kid. But that was when there were ice boxes.
Yes. Unemployment was high.
You bet.
It's okay for children to work.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of seven o'clock. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order, the May 19 edition of Lexington City Council. And if you all will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our finance director virtual with us as a precaution. COVID is still amongst us, but sure is nice to be in person and see all your smiling faces. Glad that you're here. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. Are there any items to add or change? I think the only, we do have a closed session scheduled and there will be two items within that closed session. And we do not anticipate any action after we come out of closed session at the end of this meeting. At this time, so unless there are any objections, we will approve the agenda as presented. Thank you all. Now I'd like to call on the city attorney. There've been several discussions and issues. I'll say discussions regarding participation in different topics and I've asked Jared to, if you will clear the air and give us all the straight poop on who gets to decide whether they recuse themselves or not? And what the rules of engagement are when you do recuse yourself and whether it's specific to a particular item, organization, et cetera. So with that vague introduction, Jared, if you'll take it away.
So first on the issue of the recusal ultimately, unless it's clearly banned by statute and for whatever example we have in front of us, it's ultimately up to each individual member under the city council's code of ethics, which is, in my opinion, stronger than the statute statutory provisions for conflicts of interest. Because the ethics code speaks of the appearance of a conflict, whereas the state code is limited to actual conflicts as defined under the state code. So those are all sort of case by case sort of fact patterns and considerations. But it's ultimately totally up to the member. And then if there is some concern that someone has improperly stayed on to consideration of a certain topic, it would be up to council under the code of ethics to sort of hear that complaint and opine on whether or not council as a body feels that the specific member has violated in any way the ethics code. So once regardless of whether the recusal is under the statutory conflicts of interest act or the Lexington code of ethics, the sort of the recusal is complete and entire for that entire discussion of the topic, whether that's certainly consideration and ultimate vote is pretty clear cut, but it starts well before that and any item that might come before the planning commission or anything that council as a body is holding a work session on. The the member who has recused themselves on that topic is completely barred from participating in that discussion or consideration as a member of city council. In fact, the expectation is once a member recuses themselves, when that topic is brought up on the agenda, that member will actually physically get up and leave the dais in this example said in the audience until we move on to the next agenda item. And I think that's really designed to make it clear that the recusal is complete and entire and for that purpose, for that agenda item, you're essentially considered as another member of the public. And on that point, there's nothing, the case law is clear that when you run for office and you're elected, you don't give up your first amendment rights in any way, shape or form. So any member who would recuse themselves as a member of city council on a specific topic can still speak to that issue as any other member of the public can when that comes up as an agenda item or as a public comment. And I would just suggest if that is, does come up for any reason, you just make it clear at the beginning of your comment that I'm here before you as a individual citizen of Lexington, not in my role as a city councillor. And I think that would then the remaining folks on city council can sort of weigh those comments as appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Members of council, have any questions or curios? We will embrace that process of stepping down, but one of the things I would remind all of us is that we are always elected officials. In this circumstance, if you choose to recuse and speak as a member of the public, again, that is your right, but I would encourage members of council with planning commission, ARB and others that perhaps that you not weigh in traditionally, we don't, I should say traditionally, we don't weigh in on those meetings and public comments. Reserve, take it all in. And if you're going to participate, participate in the the council discussion. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Over the last few years, I've always submitted the form that we had that we had said was required of us for matters that maybe I had to recuse myself. Would you like us to continue to submit a form or at times I've submitted forms that say on matters involving this or that I'm out of, and I've done that for eight years. Is that sufficient or?
I think that is ideal. I don't think that's necessarily part. It's not required under the ethics code. But certainly I think it's a good practice, but legally I think it's efficient to make it known for the record that will then be recorded in the minutes, your reasoning for your recusal.
Yeah, but much like council members have done in the past of declaring it, acknowledging it and stepping off the dais. Documentation of that helps the clerk and clear up anybody's memory. From that standpoint, now that we're recording meetings, it's all not quite as critical, but preferable as well. Any other questions? Very good. At this point, I'd like to move on to presentations and invite our friends of Rockbridge Swimming to come forward and with their presentation. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is William Snow. I live at 1826 Dutch Hollow Road in the county. That would be a Rayfeen mailing. I am the president of the Friends of Rockbridge Swimming and it's a nonprofit organization that that supports the pool. I prepared a letter for for distribution or to be your and I would just like to introduce our aquatics director, Leslie Ayers, to kind of give you an idea of what we've been doing and a little more detail and what we're headed towards in the future, but also answer any questions if you have any time permitting. Thank you, Leslie.
Welcome. Good to see you all. And thank you for your support, years of support of Four Swimming and the Rockbridge Aquatic Center and for this opportunity to give you an update. First, I'm very proud to tell you that we are in our 16th year of providing year-round swimming, aquasize, learn to swim, programming as well as team swimming. This past year, our club team, Rockbridge County High School, Perry McClure and SVU all swam in our pool. We are a well-used facility, open all but six days of the year, and it is not uncommon for the pool to see over 200 swimmers in a day. So very well, well-used. With this heavy use, our facility was in need of a facelift and in 2020, we launched a capital campaign to address our needs. Thanks to the generous community, we have installed a new air handling system in the bathrooms, replaced the flooring in the entire facility, added a revolving door to the south side of the building and a new main entrance with security features. A generator is on order and we hope that it arrives soon, although no guarantees these days. The pool plaster and the tile will be replaced in August, completing phase one of our plan. With that complete, with that complete, the board is now turning their attention to phase two and phase three. Phase two is simply what we have to get done in the next few years. And if you remember, we are in year 16 of 20 of the life of the dome, which means that we have turned our attention to preparing for what we know is coming, is that that dome will need to be repaired. Or not repaired, replaced. So we've already, well, you know, our fundraising has taken that into account. We're on our way there, but we also think it's time to consider maybe not putting a dome and putting a permanent structure. So with that, time to think about that, certainly before we lay down the money and and buy the dome. The other thing that we really want to look at are solar panels and and or air to water heat pumps, anything that we can do to bring the energy costs down in that facility. Obviously, it's interesting, been there 15 years and the energy costs have not changed. Hard to believe. Or in fact, in some ways, there have been a couple of years that have been cheaper. One was COVID, but 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 there were years where actually cheaper than the first few. But we have no idea whether that'll continue certainly. So and just for, we understand that pools use a lot of energy and this day and age, we don't want to do that. We want to do everything we can to be energy efficient and to be responsible. So those are the two things that we feel are necessary that we need to do right away. But then we have phase three, which is our vision phase. So it's kind of our dream phase. What is it while we're thinking about the structure? The roof, what is it that we really would like to do to improve that facility for the next 20, 30, 40 years? And a couple of things hit or on the list to look at. One is a warm water therapy pool. One are additions to our showers. Currently, we have such an overlap, we're scheduled so tightly in the year or in the day that we have adult and children overlap in the bathrooms and and that is just, it's awkward, you know? Attendances have to stay out there and basically, you know, traffic, do traffic in the bathrooms. So we need to think about how we can best do that. The other thing is our dry land equipment has always been on the pool deck and it, as you can imagine, really gets a lot of corrosion based on the atmosphere in there. So we would like to move that off the deck as large, as well as take our team room and make it a larger space because we're very cramped and we teach classes. We'll teach eight classes in that room of water safety and lifeguarding. So as well as it serves as our team rooms. So that is what I have. Just wanted to present that to you and welcome. Please come visit us, see, speak, see the space. It's really quite sweet and quite nice. And our intention was to bring it up to where it was when we first built it. And I feel like we're almost there. And I feel like we've really taken care of the space. So and I sincerely thank you for all of your help all along the way. And now we move on to the the city pool.
Before you do. Yeah, any questions on the bubble pool? I I got a couple. One, do you have an estimate of what it's going to cost to replace the bubble? What do you budgeting for that?
For that. And it's interesting, the price of replacing just the dome, because when we first purchased it, it was the dome and all of the equipment, the inflation equipment, emergency backup, all of that. All of that was the same price as what it will cost us to replace just the fabric. And that's about 100 and I think it was 110, $12,000, something like that, fairly reasonable price tag. But we want to, we want to look to something else. And we have put away for that every year. We 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 do that, but before it was, it was about four to five times more to look at a different kind of structure. And so we have a couple of places that we're going to look and just, again, just dreaming.
Have you priced out what a permanent structure would look like?
15 years ago, it was about four times, four or five times that we haven't yet, although we're in the works of people giving us proposals for different kinds of systems.
Gotcha. So 15 years ago, it was 400, 500,000?
No, four to four, about four times what it would about four. So yes, it was about a half million dollars that many years ago to do a nice structure. I mean, it depends what structure you're talking about. If we're doing something along the lines of EMI, probably it's out of our price.
40 million dollars versus, yes.
No, that's not going to go. But there are some examples and I welcome anybody that has some really good pool examples to give them to me so that we can make, have a field trip.
Very good. Any other questions? Take off on the city pool.
Okay, so tomorrow we open the doors to the city pool because Waddell is coming, the third graders will come back. If you remember, your third graders last year were able to do their water safety program that Four Swimming does every year because we had the outdoor pool. And so as soon as they went back to school, they scheduled it for the outdoor pool and we were able to do that through COVID. And they had a wonderful time. It got a little chilly as the weeks wore on, but that program is three days once a week for each class. So each class gets three times to the pool. And then typically that's that they have a pool party afterwards. So this is their pool party afterwards and for us to check their skills. And after, keep in mind, we had, we kept a list of the kids that could really use more water training, waterproofing. And so we send letters to families and give free lessons to not only those children, but typically when you have children in a family that don't know how to swim, maybe none of them do. So we're happy to take every child in the family that doesn't. We're happy to do many of that. In fact, I've hired a somebody specifically for that, for swimming, not the city of Lexington, don't worry. But Four Swimming has hired somebody to to try to. We have so many, many needs. So many people did not get water training at all for two years. So we have a lot of kids out there that don't know how to swim. And so we're trying to make up for that a little bit. And so we'll be doing that all summer long. So that that happens, your your public works did a great job as they always do in helping get that pool together. The water is clear. It's beautiful. And and everything. So we're working on the rest of it, getting it polished and and ready to go. The schedule for your lifeguards. The the schedule, it's hard, but it looks like we have all of June nailed down. Let's yay. So as you know, employment is a bit tough in this community right now in all communities. And it is definitely even in lifeguards. So but we're doing so far, so good. I won't be calling you, asking you, we might need to reduce hours, not yet. Because I think, I think we've got it. What else can we, we'll start in the morning with lap swim in the morning. And then we will do our regular, our regular scheduling concessions will still be kind of like it was COVID, not too much more than that. But a little more, a little more, hope to get the occasional food truck and that sort of thing there. But I'm very excited about the pool. It's a beautiful pool and it is our, your 52nd year that for that pool, which is amazing. It was actually built in 1969. This is the story and during Camille, but could not open for that summer because of Camille and so opened in 1970.
Very good. Thank you, Leslie. Any other questions?
My third grade will be there tomorrow. If she needs any instruction or does any running on the pool deck, you can.
We'll take care of her. Thank you.
Leslie, before you go, just want to say thank you because I don't know how many years you've had the pie fest, but that's always a highlight of summertime. Not a chance, not a chance, but I know it paid for many of the payments where the city of Lexington.
It did.
We work collaboratively. Yes. And also it'd be remiss if I didn't identify the tremendous success that the the children that have come through the bubble pool and the public pool have had most recently. I can't call the names, but I know we have some state champions. Some, I remember Will Orison being a multi-time state champion. So thank you for your.
And Ali Pho is your state champion.
Terrific. Please pass along our congratulations and thank you for the the good work you do.
I also have to say, other than Nate Aligood, he was a state champion as well.
Thank you, ma'am. It's always fun to celebrate the successes of our children without a doubt. Next item on the agenda is fiscal year 2022, third quarter financial report. Jen, welcome. Glad you're with us. And Jim, do you need to introduce? Jen, take it away.
Sorry. I forgot where the meat button was. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Speak loud and proud.
The third quarter financials are generally in line with budgeted expectations. The revenue projections for sales, meals and lodging taxes remain very positive with the expectation that these categories will exceed budget. Expenses generally remain in line with expectations after the first three quarters of this fiscal year. Moving on to the schools, they are currently at 75% of their budgeted revenue, right on target, and 73% of their expenses. As always, we are watching the utility fund very closely. Revenues are on target. Expenses are running a bit high in water operations, but then they're also lower than expected in wastewater operations. So the two somewhat cancel each other out on that front. The equipment replacement fund is under budget and due to various procurement issues with vehicles, I suspect that I'll be asking for a large amount of that unspent budget to be carried forward into FY23. So there are no significant budgetary concerns at this time and no action is requested for this particular item. However, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jen. Members of council, have any questions? Jen, just to affirm what I'm hearing you say is delivery of automobiles or trucks is what we're lacking. The manufacturers aren't able to deliver those. So we'll be carrying forward funds to pay for those when they do arrive.
That's exactly right. They've been ordered, but we just haven't been able to get them yet.
Very good. Hearing no questions. Thank you for being with us and you're welcome to join in. Hope you get to feeling better and all well.
Thank you.
Next item of the agenda, public hearings. The first public hearing is for ordinance 2022-04 incorporates budget amendments for the third quarter. You heard the report. Any thing to add, Jim?
Ms. Bell does have the specifics of the budget amendment to provide to city council. I believe you'd like to go through that, Jennifer.
Yes, please. I'll be fast. I know it's a busy meeting. So we are requesting $25,785 from the remaining FY21 carryover that has not yet been appropriated. That amount that's not yet been appropriated is 241,262. So as I said, we're requesting 25,785 of that to be appropriated to the general registrar's line to cover the expenses of the Republican primary for the sixth congressional district. Next, the Lexington Fire Department was awarded two grants from Community Foundation and Rescue Squad Assistance Fund for a total of $126,000 to purchase cardiac monitors. Those funds actually came in in FY21, but we weren't able to purchase the monitors until FY22. So I'm requesting that we appropriate those funds to the durable goods line for the fire department. Public Works was awarded a $7,500 litter grant from Virginia DEQ. And we're requesting that be appropriated to their budget as well. Public Works is partnering with Boxer Woods to implement that grant. In October, as you well know, the city sold the Pivana Building for $694,975. We're requesting 659,000 of this be appropriated to the real estate purchase line so that the city can purchase the former VDOT property. And the school fund has also asked for two appropriations totaling $31,300 to be taken from their carryover balances for capital and building projects. Excuse me, from their reserve for future needs balance, they would like to appropriate $6,000 to replace cafeteria tables at Waddell. And from their reserved for future capital needs balance, they would like to appropriate the following. $3,000 to construct a sidewalk from Richardson Park to LDMS. $12,000 to install window shades on the backside of Waddell and in the school board office. $6,000 for summer painting at Waddell and $4,300 to replace the ice machine in the cafeteria of LDMS. Lastly, at the March 17 city council meeting, council approved spending $75,000, again, from the unappropriated FY21 carryover balance to make improvements to Evergreen Cemetery. So tonight I am requesting the appropriation of those funds to the proper budget line. And those are all of my requests. I'm happy to, well, take questions.
Thank you, Jen. Members of council have questions? Concerns, issues? Thoughts?
Can I just clarify the the flow of the money that kind of on item number one regarding the general fund where we're appropriating the $25,785 for the for the primary? So that is taken out of the $241,000 of carryover. And then further at the bottom, what you just mentioned, the $75,000 for Evergreen. That $75,000 is also coming out of the 241. So at the end of this, we're kind of at $141,000. Am I right? And so that $75,000 kind of flows, it flows from the carryover into the CIP, if you will, you know, and then and then expended for Evergreen. Okay. I just wanted to be sure on that and that we're still kind of tracking $141,000 roughly as carryover funds from FY21.
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? Don't hear anyone or see anyone flailing to get to the podium. I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:26. And ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2022-04 incorporating the budget amendments for the FY22 third quarter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Hi.
Mr. Alligood?
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
Hi.
Ms. Alexander?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jen. Next item on the agenda is public hearing and consideration of CUP 2022-03, an application by Washington Lee for a conditional use permit to allow 101 North Jefferson Street. Arnie, take it away.
Oh, wait, before you start, yeah. I'd like to recuse myself. My husband, Rob Strawn, is the dean of the Williams School at Washington and Lee. And I'm recusing myself under the the city's code of
Ethics.
Ethics. Thank you.
I'll also recuse myself since my wife is employed by WNL.
Thank you all very much and we look forward to welcoming you back on the next topic. Arnie, take it away.
Excuse me, good evening to you all. This is the first two land use public hearings, excuse me. The current WNL campus master plan designings, the subject parcel for a university administered fraternity and sorority house, their request is to change that designation to an office use. There are two ways you can change that designation. One is through the conditional use permit, which is what they're requesting this evening. And then the other way is through a campus master plan. And they chose the conditional use permit, I believe, for just the speed of which they can get through. As you know, there is a current campus master plan ongoing and then there have been a number of meetings with the planning commission so far. And sooner than later, you will see that after a work session. So the request again this evening is simply to have the allowed use at one oh one North Jefferson Street to change from a university administered fraternity sorority house to an office use. You'll notice on the first part of your staff report, the location map there, still called the old Beta House. But is now, um, a, you know, a facility for all students, not just for fraternity or a theme house of any type. As it has been passed as well. Second page shows you that at least the front photograph from North Jefferson Street. And then probably most important for you on page three, the criteria that you always use for grading and making the decision for conditional use permits, the A, B, C, and D on the upper half of that page. Staff does recommend, does make a recommendation for approval and the planning commission held a public hearing on the twenty-eighth of April. And also makes a recommendation for approval. There, or a suggested motion is on page four, and then we also included the planning commission minutes there so that you can see their discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Members of council have any questions?
Just to clarify, this is currently in the institutional overlay, correct?
It is. Okay. Absolutely. In the nineteen ninety-eight version of the campus master plan for W N L is definitely included within that boundary. Yes.
And I, I'm just curious, when, when is Washington Lee considering, I mean, is this an immediate change or immediate? Okay. Um, so, so students aren't currently using it for any sorority fraternity item or
As I, I'm sorry, as I understand, general population students are in the house now.
Okay.
I think about nineteen, if I remember what's in their portion of the application, those would have to get re, be relocated.
Right.
Certainly not during the summer, but for the next fall. So their, I, um, schedule is to have this building change of use starting this summer so that they can start getting the development folks over there. And then that creates the need for another conditional use permit, but we'll get to those in the future. Because things are just changing around a little bit there, there.
Right. So I, I, I'm just curious, what, what offices are, are planned to be in, in that building?
Unfortunately, their development office.
Development office, okay.
Anything else for you to add? I was gonna say the applicant will come forward and we can pose these questions as well. And, um, but we reserve the right to call you back. Thank you, Arnie. Hugh, Tom, if y'all want to come forward. And we'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Latimer University Architect of Washington, only I live at thirty twenty Hemlock Road in Roanoke.
Thank you, sir. Members of council have any other questions? Are there busy writing? Um, any presentation that you'd like to make or information that you'd like to add from Arnie's?
Um, I, I would just, um, also note that, um, that there's parking available for, for the administrative staff and visitors, visitors right across the street. Much of the development staff that's currently in what had been known as the ROTC building behind the library. It's over, they park in the corral and this will be close to them also. Additionally, this building is in the historic downtown district. And we are taking measures to properly screen any new mechanical equipment so that, um, we'll not need uh, special permission from the architecture review board.
Very good. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Alexander.
Yes, in the location map, it has the, um, area blocked off that's going to be used. But it looks like there's a building in front that faces Main Street. What is that?
I believe that's the Pi Kappa Alpha House. This is what's been referred to as Red Square and, um,
So that remain the same?
Yes, so there are three buildings and sort of the square and the other two will remain fraternity houses.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's try a little good.
I assume there was a fraternity in it at one time. And where, where did that fraternity move to?
Um, that fraternity got into some trouble. And, um, they, um,
Uh, so, so the fraternity doesn't exist anymore at W N L?
I think they were absorbed in other fraternity.
Right.
And right after that.
People, right.
Yes, and then it became a, a theme house for a while.
And now it's gonna be an office building.
Yes, for about the last couple of years, we just had sort of a general group of students living there.
Hugh, quick question. Um, Red Square certainly has been a hub of activity for a number of years. And one of the charming things about living in a college town or college students, um, in their proximity there on Jefferson Street for, for many, many years. Uh, I, I find myself a little, uh, I, I love the, the Greek life and the positive things and attributes that the students bring to our city. And this certainly is, um, taking them from that spot. Does the university have any plans for this to return to being a fraternity house anytime in the future?
No, this is, this will be a permanent change for development. And, um, we are budgeting a rather robust renovation, so they'll have a, a quality, quality building. Um, even if this had not been necessary to find place for development people. Um, I don't know of any plans that we would have had to bring our fraternity back into that building. I'm not saying couldn't happen, but I'm not aware of any plans.
Uh, I've been around long enough to see fraternities get kicked off and then, uh, number of years later, uh, be uh, reinstituted on campus. Sigma Nu is one that was gone for a number of years. And I remember when Chris John brought that back across the street there on Henry Street. So, um, it certainly changes the complexion. And from the, the look here, it looks like Red Square will cease to exist as a common ground. It will all with the, the yellow marker in your, your picture. Um, that will no longer be utilized by the other two fraternities or, um,
Oh, it will.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just taking over the one building.
Okay.
So that, that common area will still be used by fraternities for their, their events.
I guess I'll, I'll get to you in a second, Arnie. You talked about parking. I know between, um, Red Square and, uh, the triangle building at the, the bottom, the north there on Main Street is where the fraternity, I think that's exclusively fraternity parking currently.
It's as cool, exclusively university parking, but it's not designated for fraternity use only.
Okay.
So we anticipate a shared use between the, um, development staff and the fraternity members.
You, you don't plan to dedicate spaces there for development?
Not initially, not initially. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. Very good. And the, uh, the intent, uh, of this is for the entrance to continue to be on Jefferson Street. The front facade there for the office space.
On, on Jefferson Street, there's sort of a peculiar little half round door. Um, it's called a hobbit door. Um, it will remain and we will not change that. But really the front door to the, to the building is, is at the first floor level at the, at the plaza, if you will. So really the front doors in the central area and that will remain that way.
I- in the square as opposed to that front porch? I mean, there, is there any particular purpose for the porch that's facing?
Um, the, the porch can only be, um, accessed from inside the building.
I'll take your word for it. I thought there were steps going up to it there, but very good. Any other questions for, uh, the applicant?
No, I'm curious if we have any public comment on this.
Right. It will open the public here in just a moment. Um, Arnie, can you speak to the, um, zoning in our, our yellow square there?
Sure. We just grabbed a parcel. As you can tell, each of those fraternity houses is on its own parcel for whatever reason. So we just grabbed the parcel, but the square will still remain there for use of all three buildings.
Okay.
There's no, the designation should have probably just been around the structure itself.
Gotcha. It, uh, the, the picture seems to suggest something else and just want to clearly understand. Um, and excited that the development office is excited to live next door to, um, the fraternities.
You know, we, we asked how they felt about that and they were okay, so.
Very good. Very good. Hugh, thank you.
Sure.
At, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter? Hearing none, uh, I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-eight with no comments and ask for council's consideration.
Um, I, I'd just like to say that because this is in the existing institutional overlay, my theory about this is on the one hand, to give a lot of deference and lebrake to, to Washington Lee and other institutions within their institutional overlay. But because our comprehensive plan asks us to encourage Washington Lee to stay within the existing institutional overlay. It's on the one hand, we should be deferential when they want to make changes within the institutional overlay. But on the other, be very wary of expanding the institutional overlay at all in the future. So for that reason, because this is in the institutional overlay, I feel comfortable agreeing to this. So I, I would vote in favor of this.
I'll second.
Have a motion a second. Any further discussion? Um, Dennis, your comments provoke a, a question for me. Arnie, if you can affirm when a conditional use permit is requested and then subsequently granted. It, it is in perpetuity unless the, uh, property is not used for the purpose intended for two years, twenty-four months.
That is correct.
And so Washington Lee utilizing it as office space, if they did not use it for office space, perhaps used it for storage for up to two years, then the use as an office could, could fall off.
In the most likelihood, if they change the use, they're gonna be back in front of you for a conditional use permit to change from office to whatever the new thing is. I would doubt that it would sit vacant for two years without having some use in it. But you are correct, there's a two-year window and we do not recommend that conditionally use permits be approved with a renewal period as was previously, previously done.
Gotcha. And the, um, in, in looking at, um, the condition use permit. In, in your opinion, does this set precedent for other, um, for instance, the, the rest of Red Square or?
I would always encourage you to think of these on a case-by-case basis. I know that it's hard not to think about the next one. Or when you're dealing with the next one, think about the one that you already dealt with or voted on. But I would recommend case by case, depending on what the conditions are at that particular time. So I don't think it sets a precedent. Even though the public may have a different sort of observation.
Right. There's certainly folks that are thrilled that there won't be another house of, uh, fraternity boys on that corner. Um, and others that will miss the interaction with the students and, um, get them utilizing and frequenting downtown, so.
And I just want to clarify one thing. I know there, there's a lot of renovation being planned for it. The, 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 the structure itself will not change much in appearance on the outside, correct?
We've already held a preliminary meeting about the construction or building permit. And at this time, little to nothing, little will change on the exterior of the building. Except for the, a little corral area on the backside, the square area for, um, mechanical units that have to be screened. So as of right now, I believe that they will not have to go to the architectural review board for any improvements that can be seen from a public way.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything we should be asking you that we haven't?
Can't leave anything else.
Very good. We have a motion a second and any further? Yes.
Oh, he took your statement as being a motion.
Okay.
Take it as a motion. Alright.
And she said.
Okay. Have a motion a second. Uh, no further discussion. Ask for a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Mr. Allagood.
Hi.
Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for, uh, being here and, um, welcome, uh, council members back to the dais as they come. Uh, good luck with the renovations. Thank you for making improvements to our city and, um, look forward to uh, the, the fraternities and, uh, development staff sorting through the parking issues. Should be interesting. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, uh, consideration zoning two thousand twenty-two dash zero two. Arnie, I'll let you take it away.
In the zoning ordinance, we currently have an inconsistency with the term accessory dwelling and with the term accessory apartment. So in the use matrix, we have something called an accessory dwelling. And in the definition section, we have something called an accessory apartment. It is my interpretation or recollection from the zoning ordinance update that those two should be the same thing. There was a property owner who challenged that, um, determination to the border zoning appeals. And narrowly, the border zoning appeals, um, voted with my determination. But they highly recommended and suggested that we change the zoning ordinance to get rid of that inconsistency. So either, so they both match. So it's really a choice. Do you change the term that's in the matrix? Or do you change the term that is in the definition section? And it's our recommendation because we have a longer history with the term accessory apartment in our code that we stick with that. Particular language. So as an example, on the top of page two in the use matrix, the use matrix lists all the uses that we have. And where they're allowed by right or conditionally in each of the zoning districts. So right now it says accessory dwelling and our recommendation is to change that to accessory apartment. So that it meets the definition of an accessory apartment. You will see that, that there is a staff recommendation for approval and the planning commission held a public hearing on the twenty-eighth of April. And makes a similar recommendation for approval and they are supposed to unanimous. And as usual, we also provided you with the planning commission meeting minutes. Happy answering questions.
Members of council have any questions?
Since the code of Virginia defines accessory dwelling one certain way, you know, a, a essentially a an additional structure on a single family lot, like two separate structures. Are there any accessory dwellings that were built within the city while there was some inconsistency in our code?
Not that I'm aware of. We certainly have had accessory dwellings in accessory structures existing prior to the adoption of the code in the fifties or sixties that have just continued on and they're not conforming and that's fine. One thing I didn't mention, but as soon as you start talking about state code, um, last year, you recall we had a zoning text amendment, the annual one who approved around fifteen items, if I remember correctly. And then we told you we were gonna come back and do four larger items. And one of it is small cells, um, cellular facilities. And then we're currently working on planning unit developments. And the next item on the list for planning commission to work through is accessory dwellings in accessory apartments and accessory structures, I should say. Say, I'm already getting confused in my own terminology. So we full, I fully expect to have a thorough discussion. And most likely, we will have an allowance for accessory dwellings in accessory structures. So that's still to come. So this is just a stopgap measure now to make it the current code consistent. And we know full well that we're gonna have a more full discussion on accessory structures and accessory dwellings in the near future.
Not to you know, uh, litigate the appeal to the border zoning appeals. But if there's a greater conversation later about accessory dwellings and accessory structures. If that was, if that appeal was turned down because of the interpretation was that it was about accessory apartments, would, would that per, would, would that eventually be permissible?
I'm not sure I'm following you.
I would ask the question, the applicant who was denied what they wanted to do, does this liberate them to do what they want to do?
This doesn't.
But the eventual, what you just said would.
My only qualification.
Potentially.
Only qualification to that is it depends on it, if we put a size maximum of seven hundred fifty, eight hundred and they don't meet that. So, but I, from the discussions we had so far, I presume there is gonna be an allowance for the accessory dwelling to be in an accessory structure.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Cause I do recall from, you know, several years ago, talking about our, our zoning updates. I, I specifically recall that we, I think many of us were under the impression that we were providing the opportunity per state code to have accessory dwellings. That, I, I recall that because I actually thought that that was in state code that people were allowed to have actually temporary accessory dwellings or structure for the in-law court, you know, that it was not in perpetuity, but, but temporary to have that kind of thing.
There is a separate item called a temporary healthcare structure. And I'm not using the term exactly, but that's the thing that you're recalling through state code. For a short period of time, you, the healthcare worker or a family member, they are allowed to put that. So we have to allow that. That is part of our code. But this is one step further in that accessory dwellings, as you can think of them, in-law apartments, garage apartments, that type of thing. That was added the minimum to the R one zoning district. And then there's a little bit more of a convoluted history in our And then there's a little bit more of a convoluted history in our code in the R1A, which you know, turned into R2, where there was this accessory apartment allowance, but never in an accessory structure completely and wholly separate from the main building. So we're working our way to more options and it's also in our comprehensive plan to have sort of more options and perhaps more affordability. And therefore we allowed, at least in the R1, this idea of an accessory apartment. But the definition that we approved says it should be in the main structure and doesn't allow explicitly it going in a separate detached structure.
Thank you for helping me. But I recall these conversations and I feel like I recall the intent of what we originally did and that, and I understand that we're getting, that we're getting there and that's helpful. Thanks, Arnie.
Sometimes it's really difficult to get an ordinance or a policy that applies to everyone. And then there's a one-off that it might make sense and sorting through that and trying to figure out how to get there. So thank you, Arnie. Oh, Ms. Alexander.
Just a side note that back in the 50s and 60s and maybe and beyond, those detached dwellings were very popular in Lexington and they even had addresses. For instance, if a house in the front was two twelve, whatever street, the one in the back was two twelve and a half.
Absolutely. Mr. Alligood?
Recently, six months in that timeframe, there was a case where there was a B and B on Main Street and there was a separate building that was going to be, the end result of it was that it was allowed to, for the owners to live in that building, which was separate and distinct from the, the main building. And our rules had said that the owners needed to be in the main building. And there was a question as to what the address of it was. And it turned out that at the time that it had the same address. The separate building that was going to be lived in by the owners from, to be the same address, even though they weren't physically the same structure. How did that work out? Did that remain that way? Or did they get different addresses? Or and how would that fit with what we're talking about here with the dwellings?
That is slightly different in that that's really not an accessory structure as we define an accessory structure. So that was a conditionally used permit for bed and breakfast. And you're remembering correctly that the owner operator, or I should say the owner has to live, doesn't say on the premises, it says in the dwelling. But there, because the intent was for somebody to be on the property and the property owner being having good oversight over the rental of those rooms. And you're right that both of those are under the same South Main Street address. So it was approved that the owner operator could live in the building that's across the little driveway. And you said, what has changed or what has occurred? Those folks, I believe, other than doing some improvements in the front yard by taking out the overgrowth and undergrowth, have not fully moved here yet. So they haven't opened the bed and breakfast as of yet. They will be making significant improvements shortly.
Thanks.
Thank you, Arnie. And as this is coming from the city and signed request by Jim, that was the applicant. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue. Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:52 and ask for council's consideration.
I move to approved zoning ordinance amendment 2022-02 to replace accessory dwelling with accessory apartment in the use matrix as presented by the staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. First and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, but ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. The zoning can always get so incredibly detailed. It's for some people, it's incredibly stimulating and thought provoking. And I can see from the old city manager's look on his face, he's thrilled to be here tonight. Next item on the agenda is our continued public hearing for consideration of fiscal year 2023 budget and would call on city manager and Jen.
Mr. Mayor, we'll just let the finance director walk through this again and refresh this item. Obviously, city council's had it before them for several meetings. So not much has changed, but I'll let the finance director move us ahead.
Thank you. So actually, nothing has changed since our last work session on May the 5th in either the FY23 budget or the capital improvements plan. So I am here and happy to answer any questions. And even though we haven't seen a final budget out of the general assembly, we are making the recommendation that you make a motion and adopt the budget as presented.
Thank you, Jen. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask those who would like to speak to this matter to please come forward. Ms. Ellisstead. If you could state your name and address for the record. Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you. And first, let me say it's good to see you back in this venue here. This is where you belong. Glad to see it. Even with Mr. Harwood in his regular chair over on the door. My name is John Ellisstead. I live at 412 Confederate Circle. I'm here on behalf of the Rockbridge Area Relief Association, of which I'm the vice president of the board. I'm joined by Valerie Molitano, who I'm sure you all know, who is the president of our board. I would like to start by saying first I have a question and then some, followed hopefully by some requests. Two years ago, when COVID hit, you were faced with a number of very serious financial issues. And one of those decisions you were forced to make was to eliminate the funding for 10 of the, what was quoted as discretionary nonprofit organizations in this community. These are the nonprofits that provide a great deal of the social safety net for the poorest in our community. That's certainly an understandable decision. It was my understanding at the time or our understanding at the time that this was as a result of the financial conditions that you were facing. Our question is, is that still the case? Are you in any way interested in, once again, providing some small contributions to those organizations that provide that social safety net? It's certainly, when I look at the third quarter financial report, it is certainly hard to say that the impact of the COVID isn't, is now over. Your, your other local taxes is most likely going to end up to be well over a million dollars more than what was budgeted. And then certainly will put into question the, the estimate that Mr. Hallis and the finance director made numerous months ago. It certainly appears as if you got a significant amount of money, including an extremely significant unrestricted fund balance. So the question is, is the council open to receiving requests from the nonprofits again?
Thank you for your question. I'm going to defer to the city manager to respond. And while he's preparing, acknowledge that customarily in public hearings, we don't have debate or discussion, but welcome the opportunity to address your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Ellisstead, you are correct. One of the items at that time was that was considered was the financial situation of the city, the unknowns that we faced when we all started hearing about COVID and understanding what it would do to our community and our economy. The other issue was that we were all focused as well, simultaneous, simultaneously on what were the city services that we must provide that no other organization provides. And you know, whether those are streets or picking up the trash or our parks, you know, we are focused on providing those services. Other entities in the community do provide other individuals and businesses funding for services of another nature that are, as you said, word escapes me now, but they're not necessary sole functions of discretionary is what I was looking for, discretionary functions, which are many, many different agencies and functions that could fall under that title. And so focusing on just those things that were non-discretionary is where we want to keep our efforts, keep our eye. So we did not, I did not recommend any other discretionary agency funding in the budget in order to keep our eye on that, even though revenues are good, are strong today. We still have many, many needs that are solely city needs. You know, we don't have fundraisers for replacing sidewalks. We take that from the general tax dollars, you understand. And, and there are a lot of sidewalks that need replacing. So we decided that my recommendation was to not continue any discretionary agency funding.
All right. So that is a recommendation from the city manager. Was that, is that a policy that the council supports? The reason I'm asking is because Ra-Ra did reach out to the city. We, in the past, prior to COVID, these agencies were sent letters indicating that we were, we could submit applications and there was a form. And that was submitted and reviewed by council. That is no longer being done. Ra-Ra did reach out, however, and made a request for $4,000, much to my chagrin. You know, it has not been recommended in the budget by Mr. Hallis, as he indicated. But it was not even mentioned in the budget. And I am just curious if council was aware of that. And, and that was a conscious decision of council to say, we don't, do not want to fund these agencies any longer.
So I I recall we had extensive conversations about this in September, October and November, when we had a one-time request from Halls Drive-In. And at that time, all of council asked the city manager to put together criteria for how we would approach discretionary requests. And so he put that together in November. We all reviewed it, I believe, even at multiple meetings. And it was not voted on necessarily. But that was something that council had asked the city manager to do. He put that together and we, we, we took it under advisement. I mean, as you know, city councils, board of supervisors, they can kind of change their policies. They can change their direction. I am one that, and I'm only going to speak for myself, I will always accept a request from citizens personally. But I will then weigh that with what we are providing our citizens as a local government. And this is again, only speaking for me, because I personally, as you know, I can't take my eye off the multimillion dollars that we will be spending at the jail and at the high school. I can't take the eye off that we don't have a balanced budget if it was not for carryover funds from FY22 that we expect to have. And that our current budget is actually built with what we expect as a kind of a one-time windfall of the car tax that the, that the car assessed values, appraised values are significantly higher. So I mean, I'm, I am okay with the budget that our city manager, speaking only for myself, that the city manager put forth and that we may accept. I also took under advisement the, the recommendations by the city manager in November about how we approach funding requests. And one of the items in bold was to not support operation or annual expenses. But that we would maybe consider one-time capital expenses or asks that the community was rallying behind. That was something that was provided to us. We took it under advisement. And again, I'm only speaking for myself. But I've kind of opened up Jim's recommendations from November multiple times over the months and actually reminded Jim of it and reminded my fellow council members of these recommendations as we get excellent requests from many, many nonprofits, from many worthy functions in the city that we might personally want to support. But that was something that we took under advisement back in November.
Very well. I would, well, officially, we would like to once again request that you add the $4,000 into the budget this year, if you could. And quite frankly, I think that the total number of dollars that we're talking about with all the other nine nonprofits is a total of $30,000. I fully understand that you need to look to the long-term needs of the city and all the capital needs. I would also point out that going into FY2022, you had 12.5 million dollars of unrestricted reserve fund balance going to the year. That's, that's over 60% of the general fund. I think when the city adopted a policy on fund balance, no one ever envisioned having over 60% of a general fund in unrestricted reserves. That's pretty significant. And I'm not saying you should use that. What I'm saying is $4,000 and $30,000 is a very small amount of money to say to the citizens of your community that you appreciate the services that these organizations do, that they provide a lot of services that many, many cities and counties and towns in this state provide themselves directly with taxpayers' money. It doesn't make or break any of their budgets. Now, that's, let's be clear. It's, it sends a message that these organizations are valued. And that's basically my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellisstead. And I appreciate your continued support for Ra-Ra and the good work that they do. I will point out again, typically during our public hearings and public comments, we just listen to members of the public. But being one of us for many a year, extend that latitude to our former city manager. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Reed? Please come forward and of course state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mark Reed, 614 Ross Road, Lexington. I just want to kind of echo, echo Mr. Ellisstead with a couple of extra points. I, I was at, I was at a city council meeting a number of months ago when I believe it was Ms. Alexander, but I'm not sure, who made a very clear point while in the process of approving a council. You can call it a gift, you can call it funding, you can call it whatever you want to, to Halls Drive-In. And also previous contributions, I believe, Main Street Lexington for our flowery, beautiful, soon to be beautiful entrance to the city. And I recall Ms. Alexander or somebody saying, as we approve this, we want to be keeping in mind of the people that we're going to say no to. Or words to that effect. And it, it, speaking as somebody who volunteers about 12, 13, 14, 15 hours a week, offloading tons of food from willing donors, Walmart, Food Lion, Kroger, speaking as somebody that delivers to people who don't have food, starving people, people who rely on Ra-Ra on a regular basis over and over and have been for the better part of two years, better part of three years, really. So I'm, I'm on the ground. I do that. So I know that the, the need is there. I don't recall the exact amount that you gave to, for instance, the nonprofit Halls Drive-In, the nonprofit Main Street Lexington. But in comparison, $4,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money for an organization that has been feeding Rockbridge County and Lexington for many years and has upped its output and increased its services radically for the past two plus years. And I know that because I'm part of it. So you, I think you need to consider that when you, when you vote on this, the fact that you know, Ra-Ra gives away food for free. Main Street Lexington gets money. They're not really selling anything to make it up. And Halls Drive-In is a nonprofit, but I mean, they got money. They're going to make money partially as a result of the money that you give and gave to them. Whereas Ra-Ra is going to take $4,000 and spread it over whatever amount of time and distance and area to feed people who don't have food. So I think you need to consider that before you make this decision. Because I think Mr. Ellis said makes a lot of sense. And I think I'm making a lot of sense when I speak this to you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing at eight oh eight and ask for council's consideration.
I have a question for for Jen. So we're leaving in the funds. We're still hoping for the school to receive some construction money.
Jennifer, can you hear us?
Trying to find that unmute. Did you hear that question, Jen?
I did not. I'm sorry.
So we're going to leave in the 1.2 million for our school construction that we're hoping to receive from the state at this point for, yeah. Can't hear.
Jim's nodding his head, yes, so I'm gonna.
That is correct.
Very good.
And I will just say, as far as the comments brought up. About the nonprofits, I would say we all support our nonprofits. And I know. I mean, I personally support our nonprofits. I've been on the board of several nonprofits. And we definitely appreciate the work they do. The amount that city council has given is. A drop in the bucket. It's not going to make or break any of the nonprofits. The problem with it is, one, we spend up, and I think. John, you probably remember this, we end up spending more time talking about where we're going to give $2,000. Than we do on spending, you know, millions of dollars on the CIP and. It's not very productive and it's not that we don't appreciate our nonprofits, but. I mean, I know as a fact that that money can come from the community. We have generous, we have a generous community. And if people are asked, they will provide the funds. And I I do have some reservation about. Spending too much time and money on non discretionary funds because we're spending the the public's money. And not everybody has money to give to nonprofits. And I think those of us that do should give to it. And I don't necessarily see that as being. A city function. And I know it really was just saying a small way of saying we appreciate our nonprofits. But I do, I do agree with the city manager's policy as it is. I'd like to support the, when we can, a capital campaign. Those are usually bigger projects that are harder to raise funds for rather than being part of the operating budgets of the nonprofits.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. I would welcome council's consideration regarding the budget. We've had multiple public hearings. You know, the items that are there, we're counting on the state to pull through for us. And.
I move to approve FY twenty twenty three budget and FY twenty twenty three through twenty twenty seven capital improvement plan as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Second, have a motion to second any further discussion. I just want to echo the the words that council members have spoken. The. Not including a contribution to Ra-Ra. In this particular budget does not indicate a lack of support. By city council and by the city of Lexington for the good work that Ra-Ra does. My recollection over the years of being involved is the hope and expectation is that all the nonprofits will be self supporting. When they do find themselves in difficult times. Again, over the past 20 years, there have been various organizations that have had some struggles. It needed some capital infusion because they were, for instance, Yellow Brick Road. When another daycare was closing down and Yellow Brick Road needed to pick up the pieces and help. Families in town, there was a one time contribution intended for that support. It continued on for about 10 years. For no apparent reason, as Yellow Brick Road got back on its feet. So. The city not making those cash contributions, I feel very strongly that it is no indictment and no disrespect. Of the the intent and support of the good work that the multitude of nonprofits do in our community and. I'd be disappointed, John, if you didn't come and ask, and I'm grateful for you being here tonight and making that ask. At this point, I'd like to ask city council for a roll call vote. On this item, Mr. Alligood. Mr. Ziegler, Ms. Alexander. Mr. Ayers, I, Ms. Strong.
I.
Motion carries unanimously. We have approved the budget. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. Your May five work session and regular meeting were in your packet. Unless there's any objection, we will approve those as presented. And thank you, Janie. Next item on the agenda is citizens' remarks and comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to council this evening? Hearing none at eight fourteen. I'd like to close the citizens' remarks and comments and move into the consent agenda. There are three items for your reviewing, unless there are any questions, I would welcome your consideration.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion as second. I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler, I, Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Ayers.
I.
Mr. Alligood.
I.
Ms. Alexander.
I.
A motion carries unanimously. So mark your calendar for all the fun events that are indicated there. Next is unfinished business, an update on the Spotswood site purchase. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been through this process for some time and just recently, city council did select a partner developer to. Propose development and for the Spotswood site and to reach an agreement as to how the site would be developed. And that we would approve that agreement so that they could move forward. Basically, at this point in time, what I am recommending and pursuing is that on June second. Our next meeting, we would have an agreement for council to review. And there'd be a public hearing, but no consideration on that agreement. That the Echelon and corporate would be here to provide a presentation, a little more detail about what their proposed development would look like. That public hearing would then be carried over to the first meeting in July. The community would have plenty of time, as would city council, to review the agreement itself. Consider the additional information that Echelon would provide to you as to the character of that development on the site. Take up that public hearing again in July for consideration. And make a motion to either approve or not approve at that time. In my conversations with Edwin Gaskin from Echelon. He's delayed as much as he wants to delay. The economic conditions continue to change. The site, of course, has gotten smaller. So the opportunities for moving forward are more limited than they were two years ago when he made this proposal and soon thereafter, a conversation started. So I I understand his position. And if council can make a decision to approve the agreement. You'd like to see that done expeditiously. If you cannot, also make that decision expeditiously. He doesn't want to have another three or four, six month evaluation and review of how this development could look on Spotswood. Either conceptually, what he provides next meeting, June second, say, yes, we like it, or say, no, we don't as soon as possible. And he can go on to other business. Would love to still do business here in the community. And then city council can look at some other developers, some other proposal for that site in the future if if his doesn't meet the grade, if you will. So I don't have any recommendation tonight other than to begin that process of consideration of an agreement. So that we move forward in a pretty expeditions fashion.
And and just to echo what the city managers saying, want plenty of opportunity for members of the public to be aware, to review the agreement, to understand. And be able to be here to ask questions as we move forward on this project.
I'm just gonna ask it, will all council members be available July seventh or two July meetings? Sounds like it.
I I would anticipate that's when they're scheduled, as I like to remind everyone. It certainly can be. July fourth week is a great time to take vacation, so. We will anticipate folks will be here. Yes, sir.
Where is the planning commission going to fit in this?
The planning commission fits where they normally do. They would obviously review a site plan. I believe in this case. They anticipate a conditional use permit would be applied for and have to be reviewed by the planning commission, city council, both site plan.
Jim, I'm gonna ask you to pull that microphone a little closer, just so we can be sure to hear you and get good recording.
Okay, my apologies. Thought it was pretty close. Planning commission would have the same role as they normally do in a situation of this nature. A site plan would be submitted and be reviewed by planning commission. My belief is that the applicant would. Developer partner would apply for a conditional use permit that the planning commission would have to review. Height is one issue I believe that they would need to address in that permit. There may or may not be more. I have not seen it, nor has Arnie. So that role would not change. What city council would be doing is basically saying, yes, we like the concept that it will be proposed. Without going into any details, any review of our planning or zoning ordinances, that is the role of planning commission. Or city council would say, no, we don't like it. And at that point, the developer would probably withdraw.
It it's, excuse me, but it seems backwards to do it that way. It it. Typically, don't we get planning commission. Recommendations to the city council for the city council to then take a look at approving or not. Of a planning commission. And what you're suggesting now is that. City council is going to then take a thumbs up or thumbs down on the proposal and then it'll go to the planning commission. And then maybe it'll come back.
Well, this is a purchase agreement, and I could let the city attorney speak to this as well. But in the purchase agreement, the the buyer has an opportunity to do due diligence of a variety of nature, various nature. To determine whether or not they want to spend some real money. Preparing a site plan, doing the tests that need to be conducted. Because if we're, if you as city council aren't willing to approve the concept, they don't want to spend any money. You know, they've got to spend a lot of money and. Well, it's not their property.
That's the key difference is that we're looking to sell this property to them.
Right, and we haven't done that yet.
Correct. And and so. That's why it's a little bit different process in making an agreement of what's to happen there and to. I I always go back to the word of. That we've used all along the way of partnering, finding someone to develop this piece of property. We've been talking for years about finding someone to partner with to develop. The V dot property. And this came before that. But we're looking for someone and to have an agreement that something will be built there. And if we can get that agreement. Then the nuts and bolts go to the planning commission. They review the site plan, any zoning changes that may be necessary. And then it would come to us with that recommendation because at that point, they would be the presumed owner of the property.
So I think I think those are good questions from Mr. Alligood because as I remember, the water tower purchase agreement said that we would rezone it. Right, would, you know, and and so is that something that we would expect a similar purchase agreement that said we will approve the. Site plan and we will, you know, I I think that I I'm tracking what the the question is here. I mean, it. You know, it it puts a lot on the purchase agreement if it says what we will do, because I, so I look forward to reading it. And and seeing what what we're being asked to do in the purchase agreement, because I I totally am picking up on Mr. Alligood's questions and why it might seem. Little out of out of order and what we expected and what we had had portrayed as would be the process leading up to this.
One other big difference between this and the water tower is that they've. Echelon has already said that it will be built within our ordinance, our zoning, whereas the water tower required. Changes to our zoning before they could, they could operate it as a bed and breakfast.
Except they're asking for a CUP potentially.
Which is part of our normal process.
Is part of our normal process, right?
And and that might be helpful, just the sales agreement is essentially a contingent agreement is we'll have something in place that. If everything goes according to plan, we will sell the property, but it is conditioned on approval. We're not promising that the conditional use permit will be approved. We're promising that we will present that to the the two entities. And if for whatever reason, the conditional use permit is denied, that will essentially end the sales agreement. So that that's how we're, we're giving the developer some. Essentially enough of a, an agreement to rely on to do the investments of investigating the site, putting these proposals together. But at the same time, we're not ultimately tied to, we are 100% agreeing to sell the property. Under any conditions not approved by both the planning commission and ultimately city council.
And then whatever conditions that city council wants to put in that agreement. Then would be subject to the acceptance by the developer, number one, and number two. The process through the planning commission. And then come back again to the city council for approval or not of planning commission recommendations on that project.
Exactly. And and at any point during that time, the developer can pull out and say, you know, the planning commission didn't approve whatever specific item. He requests in the conditional use permit. They can say, well, we can't do the project and that's sort of the end of it. And then everyone walks away.
Again, the major difference between this and quote unquote, normal things dealing with zoning is that there's a property owner. So Washington Lee owns the property. They make application. It goes to planning commission. They make a recommendation to city council. The Alligoods want to do an addition or get a variance. It goes to planning commission and then comes city council, but you own the property. We're looking at contingently selling the property. And that's, that's why we're having the first blush, if you will, relative to that. Because I'll remind you, it's going to take five votes of council, five members of council to vote to sell this property. And that agreement will also need the the five votes. If we don't have them, we'll continue to be mowing grass on Spotswood. But great question. This is healthy discussion to make sure we're all understanding and moving in the same direction. And that's why I'd ask the city manager to lay out the process and give plenty of time for members of the community. If they're traveling internationally and not able to be here, that they can get a chance to see it online or whatever circumstances prevail. And we have a solid month really for anyone who wasn't aware that we're looking to engage Echelon. To develop the Spotswood property. Does that make sense? Very good. Anything else, city manager? Very good. And unfinished business, Spotswood will continue on there till we. Perhaps no longer own the property ideally. Next item are reports and communications in the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. I'm not aware of anything to update from our our last, most recent meeting. Although I will add, I don't know, I don't think anyone else dialed in for the RAC education opportunity last night at seven. Talking about PFAS. And I can't tell you exactly what the pollinate and the chemistry associated with that because of my economics major. But interesting information and as always, good work and very thoughtful work by RAC. On working with our MSA as well as the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. For opportunities to keep our citizens safe and the issues with plastic and forever. Molecules, I think, is. What with they build it to be. If you have more questions, let me know. I'll talk to you offline. Main Street Lexington.
Main Street Lexington met on Tuesday, May 10th, and the Main Street Triangle Garden Construction will begin soon. The next project that the Design Committee will look at is the Courthouse Square refresh. Hopkins Green is getting an update with new plantings and pergola. And the city is leading this project and Main Street has submitted a grant for the work. And remember to save the dates for Saturday, June 11th is Rock the Bridge from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. Sunday, July 3rd is the Freedom Food Festival from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. And Monday, July 4th is is the Children's Bike Parade with decorating at 10:00 a.m. and the parade at 11:00 a.m. And that's all I have.
Always good family fun for Fourth of July. Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Strong? Planning Commission.
The planning commission took action on the WNL master plan and Arnie will explain the recommendation. The planning commission took action on the W N L master plan and Arnie will explain the recommendations at the city council work session on Tuesday, June seventh at five thirty P M. That's all I have.
Trying to remember, are we still on for the June seventh work session? I think.
Did you cancel it?
Washington Lee is unavailable.
Oh, okay. Well, whenever you meet next door, if you have any questions, you can ask Arnie about it.
Yeah, so. Arnie, can I ask the you're you're putting together like a compilation of what they what they voted on basically like. So so they'll kind of put a rubber stamp on it or whatnot. So we'll see that at the same time, right? You will share that with us.
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe to just go over a little bit, planning commission is almost done with the recommendation. They have voted on everything, but there's just this one last meeting at their next where they just want to review the motion and make the motion. So that's sort of the rubber stamp, I believe.
You're right, that's that's.
And we're gonna have that work session with W N L and then I'm gonna help you through some a later date. With some of the more finer points, I guess, with the zoning and then we'll figure out when you would like for the public hearing to be scheduled.
Okay.
And Washington Lee was not available other, the the week of the seventh, I believe, or sixth or seventh. So the plan currently is to have a work session prior to the June second meeting. Yes. And we may do something egregious like start at five thirty so that we have plenty of time to to work through all the details before our regular seven o'clock meeting. So. Anything else planning? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Regional tourism, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you. The board met on five eighteen and spent the session reviewing the eleven grant applications received from various organizations for round three of our sponsorship grant program, which covers events. From July first through December thirty first. Tourism staff will be reaching out to the individual organizations about their specific grant awards starting tomorrow and through next week. And speaking of grants, regional tourism received ten thousand dollars from Virginia Tourism Corporation to promote its Rockbridge, Rocking Rock Bridge Summer Six, which is a collection of six events in our area over Independence Day weekend. Things like the Brownsburg Garden Tour, the Kids Bike Parade, the Glen Mori Park Music and Fireworks, and of course, the Freedom Food Festival. So there's going to be a lot to do in our area over the July fourth weekend. In addition to regional tourism's grant award, tourism staff assisted local organizations balloons over Rockbridge Lime Kiln Theater Summer Concert Series and Ride Gravista LLC with their own successful grant applications. And in all, our immediate area received more than thirty thousand dollars in grant awards from Virginia Tourism. Finally, Rockbridge Vineyard and Brewery is getting some great recognition. On May twelfth, Vineyard owner Shep Rouse was named Virginia's Wine Grower of the Year. And back in March, two of their wines took home a gold medal in the Virginia Governor's Cup with one of. With one, their two thousand and eighteen Vador landing in the Governor's Cup case. The Governor's Cup means that a wine selection was in the top twelve out of six hundred and fifteen different wines submitted, so that's quite an accomplishment. So congrats to them and a big thanks for helping to make our area such a popular wine destination. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
No questions. Thank you and lots of fun to look forward to. I'm not sure if I heard you say balloons over Rockbridge, but that's part part.
Yes, that's one of them.
Excellent, excellent. Raro, Mr. Ziegler.
No report.
Very good. Not met? This month?
We met back, but I I reported on that at our.
Last meeting. Fair enough. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
We have not met, but there will be our second joint housing educational session. With a representative from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of May at five P M. By Zoom. And if you are interested, make sure that you let Kate Beard know so that you can be sent that email to Lincoln.
What's the date on that again?
May twenty-fifth. Five P M.
Thank you, ma'am. More Service Authority, Mr. Alligood.
The MSA board is scheduled to meet next Tuesday at five o'clock in this room. Other than that, I've reported at our last meeting, on our previous goings on, there hasn't been any change. The paperwork has been submitted. We're waiting to hear back from the state on that big project that we've applied for the twenty million dollar level. And maybe we'll know something next Tuesday. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Lots of things going on with the MSA. For my report, I just wanted to bring forward an applicant for threshold. I believe it's Shadree Sands who had been recommended by. I can't remember exactly who, but.
Lindsay.
Lindsay at RARO. And in looking. It's for vacancy that would serve a three-year term ending June thirty of twenty twenty-four. And I would welcome your all's consideration for Shadree Sands.
Move to approve Shadree Sands to for an appointment to the threshold board with a three-year term ending June thirty of twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, Mr. Ayers.
I.
Mr. Alligood.
I.
Ms. Strong.
I.
Mr. Ziegler.
I.
Ms. Alexander.
I.
Motion carries unanimously and thank you to Shadree for agreeing to be a part of threshold and the good work that you all do. I'd call the city manager, or I'm sorry, one item. And oh, by the way, if you will, earlier this evening, I went to the Business After Hours, the chamber sponsored and was hosted by Michael Sterns with his treehouse. Airbnb out in Rockbridge Baths. Gorgeous setting. If you can afford to steal the time, go out there and visit and or rent from him. It is a gorgeous facility. But while I was there, I ran to Greg Madsen, who alerted me that he had just come from a board meeting. And where RARO was concerned about our our lack of support. One of the things that the local hospital did when they sold to Corillian was create the Community Health Foundation, which is a support organization for the hospital. And he alerted me that the hospital just made announcements. I didn't get what they were, but seven hundred thousand dollars in grant money. When Corillian purchased the property from the Community Health Foundation, it gave them cash to be able to to do these things. So, Ms. Alexander.
They had seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars available, but they dispersed four hundred and some thousand of it to local organizations. And then the rest of it will carry over for the next cycle year.
Okay, not to the hospital specifically. Because.
The the seven hundred thousand went to the hospital and the hospital foundation has dispersed that money out to organizations that applied for it and over four hundred thousand. Went out.
So good, good news and opportunities for additional good work in our community. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a follow-up to the question that council member Strong asked about the work session with. Washington Lee, I paused because I was mentally kicking myself and chagrined that I put together a very comprehensive report for you and I left it on my computer. So with my apologies, I will email that to you as soon as I get back to the office after this meeting. To our city clerk, to Mr. Harwood and Mr. Reed and our city attorney and then the public hopefully will see it and you will see it at that juncture, but I don't have it with me. My apologies.
Nothing else to report? Very good. City attorney.
Have no report tonight, but happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions for the city attorney? It's great not to have the need to ask you about the status of the VDOT property. As although I guess it doesn't fall into your purview if the grass has been mowed.
Not aware, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Alligood.
I would like to back up a notch to city manager and ask the question in there. The question is, the, I'm still confused about the. Now canceled work session that was set for June the seventh with W N L and city council.
That work session will be instead before your June second meeting at five thirty.
Not W N L.
With W N L.
With W N L.
With W N L. Yes, sir.
All right.
No problem. Yeah, we in our earlier discussions had believed W N L would be available and both Mr. McAllister and Mr. Kolaszky apparently had something developed and they couldn't be available that week. So.
Everybody's busy. Thank you. I was confused.
And I I share in your confusion. I was still thinking that we need to get everybody's schedules together and was trying to do it on an off night. That we could just focus on that particular piece, but when I realized it's the the four of us. It's easier to match up the schedules.
At five thirty, perhaps.
Correct, correct. Very good. Any other questions? If not, any new business? I'm not aware of any. We will work towards our closed session and again, before Ms. Alexander reads us into closed session. Thank you all for being here. We do not plan on taking any action related to the items in closed session. We will just open and adjourn the meeting. So, Ms. Alexander.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven subsection A, paragraph one. Of the Code of Virginia, a closed session to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation. You just heard a motion. Is there a second?
Ms. Alexander, hold on just a second. We need to add to that. Yes. What's what's the language on that?
Also be an additional closed section in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven subsection A, paragraph three of the Code of Virginia. Closed session to discuss the disposition of publicly held real estate, specifically the Spotswood property. And that could be the same motion. We'll discuss both at the same close session.
Second, sir.
Roll call vote, Ms. Strong.
I.
Mr. Ziegler.
I.
Mr. Ayers.
I.
Alligood.
I.
I. Mr. Smith is absent and motion carries.
So was that post picture then?
Music night, concert night is tonight, the whole W A L.